I call the 2,416th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 in city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card for those at City Hall or by emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. I will note that Councilor Kostrobody is with us over Zoom today. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. One of these days, I'm going to read that in Russian. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuya et cetera treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And then we have a few announcements. Clackamas County Public Health will be offering free drop-in flu shots at the Letting Library on Friday, December 20th. That's this Friday. That's this Friday, from 10:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. No appointment is necessary, just stop by in Study Room 2. I think that's awesome. I don't remember seeing that before, but I think that's great that they're doing that. This Saturday, December 21st, is the annual winter solstice and Christmas ships viewing event at Milwaukee Bay Park. The Llewellyn Neighborhood District Association will be in attendance, selling food, hot chocolate, and other treats to raise funding for their annual concerts in the park. Beer store Milwaukee will be on hand for attendees to purchase local craft adult beverages, warm by the bonfire, or cozy up to one of the small barrel fires, and of course, view the Christmas ships as they make their way up the river and back, which has been a tradition since 1954. You'll notice the boats all this year, a lot of them have 70 on it. So 70 years of Christmas ships. The Milwaukee Arts Committee is hosting the second annual Bing in the New Year event on Tuesday, December 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The event includes a beer garden, food vendors, live music, lion dancers, and other Chinese performance artists. At 9:00 p.m., a seven-foot lighted Bing cherry will be dropped. The event takes place in the parking lot at Main and Harrison Street. The city is seeking nominations for the 2024 Volunteer of the Year. Nominees can include anyone who resides in Milwaukee or is a member of a nonprofit organization or business that serves the Milwaukee community. Those nominating the person are asked to discuss the nominee's volunteer work and discuss how it has improved Milwaukee using an online forum on Engage Milwaukee. If you know someone who volunteers and has gone above and beyond in 2024, please consider nominating them for the award. And I will say, we have always a great lineup of nominees, and it's always a hard decision to pick the volunteer of the year. But if you've nominated somebody in the past who hasn't won, please don't, you know, please think about nominating them again if you think they're deserving of the award. And I will just note in our work session earlier today, we discussed that we would be recruiting for some vacancies on our planning commission. So watch for that early in the new year, information on how to apply for that and an information session that may happen around that for people who are interested in considering serving on the planning commission. Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to add a couple of things. On the evening that the solstice celebration is happening, there's also a vigil in Oregon City from 6:00 to 7:00. So if you time it right, you might be able to participate in both of these events. And it's the longest night of the year vigil, which is an annual remembrance of folks that are living on sheltered outdoors and those that have lost their lives in the last year. So that runs in Oregon City from 6:00 to 7:00. We've been in conversation about the potential of moving that event in the future to Milwaukee. It won't always intersect like this because the running of the solstice ships is not always on the longest night of the year. So this year, anyway, we'll figure out how to clone and be in two places at once. I also wanted to say that for Bing in the New Year, I want to give a little shout out to the band that's playing at 6:30, which is the early shift. But at 6:30, there's a band made up entirely of freshmen from Milwaukee High School that are playing, and their name is Clueless, and the word on the street is that they're pretty epic. So I just wanted to add that.
Can attest. I saw them at Porch Fest. Very epic.
Great. Look forward to that. Before I go to the haiku, I just wanted to note, because a few more people have come in, if you're here and you think you will want to testify, please fill one of these yellow cards that are on that table out and get it to Mr. Stauffer. Okay, so we have a haiku. This one was written for us by our AV tech. He actually submitted it last month, but I thought it was appropriate to save it for tonight because tonight's the night that we are certifying the results of the election and the fact that Councilor Anderson and Councilor Kostrobody are going to stay with us in the new year. So I held this haiku for today. "City Council Folks Toiling for the Well-Being of What We Call Home." It's a nice one. And there's a member of our audience today who has been here a few meetings and has been... I was distressed by talk of discontinuing the haiku. So she has generated a lot of new haiku to me, not just personally. She's provided a couple herself, but she got some of the teachers at MHS and Ma generating haiku. So it's very exciting. The haiku will continue in 2025. Okay. Immunity comment. So this is the period... This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community member comments regarding city business that is not already on the agenda. So this is not, if you're here about Sparrow, if you're here about open container, this is not the time to comment. But if you're here to talk about something else that's not on the agenda, this is your time to comment. I don't think I have anybody... Yeah, I don't have anybody yet at this point saying they want to comment during this period. But before we begin, is there a follow-up from the December 3rd comments, Ms. Segar?
There is, Mayor. I want to thank Ms. Amy Ryman for attending our last meeting and providing comments about experiences she's been having, reporting potential code violations via our police department code enforcement. I really appreciate you taking the time to come and daylight several of those concerns. I've had follow-up conversations with our code enforcement staff and public safety staff. The property in question that Ms. Ryman was here to testify about is definitely on our radar. In fact, we've issued seven citations for noise to that property. There's been some failures to appear and lack of payment on those citations, but we have cited. But we know that the issues continue to be ongoing. And Ms. Ryman did point out that there, you know, there'd been sort of a... Told to call one person, then told to call another person. And I definitely own that we are processes, we're not up to snuff on this. It's led to some really good process improvement conversations among my staff. We'll be assigning a, or we have assigned, either has happened or will happen this week, a police officer dedicated to this property. So when Ms. Ryman or other neighbors call in, that will all get directed to that officer and relayed to our code enforcement folks that we can follow up on it. But we had kind of like a case manager now for this project. I learned a lot too about our code, our noise code and nuisance code through this process. It is complicated and convoluted, and I again own that. And so, and we don't expect, you know, every member of the public to understand all those ins and outs. That's for us to do. But I think having this case manager will also help as those calls come in us to very much document the time things are happening, when things are happening, and support our community members as they navigate these issues. There have been a few other reports about this property, one about a barking dog. And then there are also, there's a lot of construction happening at that site. And there's been some complications. We issue a lot of permits from a lot of different departments in the city, and we're always working on improving the processes around how that works so that when our code enforcement folks need to go out there and enforce on construction activity, whether it's happening according to permits, we have some room for improvement there. So we're taking that very seriously too and working on those. And our code enforcement folks do plan to be doing some additional code enforcement around some erosion control issues and other construction issues at that site. So again, thank you to Ms. Ryman for bringing this all to my attention. And I hope that these improvements will see some progress on this issue.
Thank you. So I don't have anyone signed in to testify for this general public comment. I'm not seeing anyone raising hands. Mr. Stauffer, is anyone online raising hands? Okay, then I will... I actually, I would normally forego this script, but I'm going to read a little bit of it because it's going to apply later. We will... Because council has multiple business items on agenda, we will limit speakers to three minutes each. And if you're calling in through Zoom, you can testify at that period by raising your hand too. I guess I don't need to read the full script. Okay, so consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the City Council November 12th, 2024 study session, a resolution certifying the results of the November 5th, 2024 election, and a resolution acting as the local contract review board authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the North Clackamas School District for School Resource Officer Services. Does any council member wish to remove a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I have motion to approve. Second motion.
It's been moved and approved. To approve the consent agenda as submitted, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. None heard. The consent agenda passes unanimously. Okay. So council, we've had a little shuffle of the agenda today, and I appreciate everyone's patience as we worked this out the last couple of days. But we're going to, we're going to begin with item 7C, the downtown open container policy discussion. It was originally set for the work session. I, we have this and we have, we have one public hearing tonight. We have this and the Sparrow item, which are not technically public hearings, but I do intend to kind of run them like a quasi-public hearing. So I'm going to ask staff to come forward and give their presentation. I'm going to ask councilors to ask clarifying questions, but not get into deliberation. I'm going to ask, then I'm going to open it for public comment. Let staff come back and respond if there's anything they feel warrants response, and then we'll have deliberation at the end. So that's how I plan to handle this item. And with that, we will welcome our police chief, Ryan Burdick, to come talk to us. And I just also want to say, open container means some different things in different parts of the world. If you grew up in Texas, that meant driving around with open beer in the car. We are not talking about driving, we're not talking about driving around. We're talking about walking the streets of our downtown. So just to sort of narrow the focus. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Beatty, Council President Massey, and council. Thanks for the opportunity. Staff, we were asked to do an initial public safety review for the concept of an open container area in our downtown business core. For some background, we did the staff report. We do have a municipal code already on the books from 1993 that does speak to open containers for consumption. Currently, that's a $250 fine. As we looked at this, we did look at some potential public safety risks. This is the start of a conversation, by no means the end. So this is an ongoing dialogue. Some of the public safety concerns that were mentioned were increased risk of potential disorderly behavior related to intoxication, fights, or other public disorder-related crimes. This could be a strain on law enforcement resources with additional calls for service. We do have potential impacts on other businesses in the downtown area if there's intoxicated people walking back and forth and issues related to that. Potential damage for criminal mischief or damage to property. Public health implications, open container policies can sometimes lead to excessive drinking and normalize alcohol consumption in public spaces. And then risk to vulnerable populations. We have been, could exacerbate some challenges faced by vulnerable groups, especially those struggling with addiction or experiencing homelessness. There's generally noise-related issues that come up with drinking in public that can cause noise complaints, especially when we have mixed-use properties like North Main Village with people living above, that could have potential calls for service that come up. And then there's legal liability concerns. When we have to enforce boundaries, ensure the responsible consumption, sometimes those interactions can be difficult or challenging. And then sometimes you can have increased litigation that comes with that. If we arrive, there's an initial contact, we lead to citation. There could be something that comes up, there could be fighting with people that are impaired. It's not uncommon. So there are issues that can arise with this. It is important for us also to try and see what we can do to improve and revitalize our downtown area. So it's, like I said, this is kind of part of that ongoing conversation. We definitely want to do what we can to support our local businesses to make sure that they can have events, events that include alcohol, that are fun, attract people to Milwaukee, and that shop in our downtown area to make it as vibrant as possible. There's additional related to this. I did talk to the chief at Hood River, and he was able to say, hey, this, this has actually worked for us in our community. We haven't had heavy call load or calls for service related to this. And then I've talked to people that have worked in law enforcement that were working in Portland. Different experience, and our proximity to Portland can create some, some issues for us that we definitely need to consider and work our way through. So we are definitely cognizant that there's risk and benefits that can come with this. And then we also want to make sure too that with our current processes of permitting events, that's been very successful to date. And if we want to make sure that maybe that, there's a way to streamline that process that makes it more efficient for businesses. We have very good events, the Shamrock in Good Time, that's been successful. That hasn't resulted in calls for service for us. But we also have asked them to mandate that have security on site. And I think that's helped make for a more successful event. So this is the kind of the start of some conversations and definitely want to do what we can to support the businesses, but also make sure that there's good community support, community safety.
Questions for the chief? Clarifying questions? Go ahead.
You mentioned an increased risk of disorderly behavior and a few other hypotheticals. Do you have any surveys that actually show that? I mean, it sounds like you have a conversation with the Hood River Police who says actually the opposite, or at least you're not seeing that.
There's, so we have some anecdotal experiences. We don't have surveys. That's, that's not something the police department... But we do have some other data points. We used to, when the Hooper Sobering Center was open, we would take generally 60 to 90 people a year on a public safety hold for intoxication. When that went away, we had to rethink our strategies. When that went away, we had to rethink our strategies, but dealing with intoxicated persons takes up a lot of time from our staff at the police department. We're typically trying to connect them to family member, a friend, a safe place, when it's extreme intoxication, which sometimes is the case, we're facilitating an ambulance pickup.
I guess what I'm unclear about is, is a change like this, like, how much of an uptick are we actually going to see? I, I don't think the population that we're talking about here is necessarily the folks who are wasted on the side of a street with a brown paper bag. I think it's more customers going business to business.
So, there's, there's different things that can occur. It can be that very experienced, and then there can also be issues that come up related to theft. One of the issues that happened in Portland with some of our people that work transit was the laws changed how and where you could drink. Some of the businesses started experiencing significant rates of theft, and it, it became a significant problem for the community. So, different communities, different problems. People going business to business won't necessarily result in, I, I think, dramatic bad things occurring, but I'd also say is we have a very successful permitting process that I think has worked well to date. I don't think it's particularly cumbersome, at least I hope it's not. But, and so I think there's some efficiencies there. Sometimes, too, we want these events or places to have security staff on hand if there's a high number of people. I think, I'm not trying to pick on the Shamrock and Good Time, but that's a case, that's an event and point where we specifically ask them in the permit, you need to have security staff. There could be other events like that. Allowing an open container zone also is, if somebody steps outside the zone, then we're typically the ones that are called to address that. You know, so, and, and that's not necessarily the police department role that I'm looking for our staff to, to be involved in too much, if I can help it.
I guess, the, the reason I ask, and the, the data that I'd still like to see as we consider this is like, just data flat out. I, I don't think, to me, what we see in Hood River isn't people going wild on the streets. And I think understanding maybe the differences in Hood River's policy versus what happened in Portland, and just being able to quantify, like, I, I think often these types of conversations can end up being overblown in our concerns, and so being able to quantify what's happening in other cities.
And if I could just interject there, and these are great questions, Councilor Anderson, and, and as Chief Burdick said, this is a start of a conversation. I think based on, you know, what we hear tonight, we can dig deeper into data. I, I think what we asked, what I asked chief to do in putting the staff report together is put that sort of public safety scan. What, what are some of the, the red flags in your brain? And I think with our current code that we've got, it, it's not that we're using that 10 times a day to cite people. That said, I do think there's a significant amount of police resources that is spent right now on a population that I don't think is frankly frequenting our businesses and kind of, you know, being great patrons, but are experiencing some other challenges. And so I think what the chief is pointing out here, and, and this is not at all to, to belittle what you're saying about the importance of data and things we should dive into, but just an honest expression of anything that potentially could further exacerbate the challenges that we're dealing with today might have a commensurate impact on our policing resources. I can't prove that to you or tell you the exact percentage that it's going to happen, and I think we would be really pleasantly in the hap, we would love to see that not happen, and, and it sounds great. I appreciate the chief calling Hood River and finding out that data point of where it hasn't. But I, I think what you were trying to kind of articulate here is already to date, we spend quite a bit of time trying to support folks who are, who are using open containers on our streets even with it being illegal, and so just thinking about that, that this could have an uptick on it.
And I guess to clarify, I'm not, the reason I'm asking this is, it's my understanding, even if we change this ordinance, we would still have codes that would allow us to handle populations who are overly intoxicated, a nuisance of some type. The reason why I want to see data is understanding, like, if we just allow the average Joe to go around with a beer, how much will that increase people going to that high acuity population that really is causing a problem? And it's that transfer of people that I'd want to see some type of quantification of.
Totally makes sense.
Oh, I, I don't know whether I start with observations or questions. It's a can of whatever. I think there's a lot of devil in the details here, you know, and, um, so, my first experience was with an open container place was in New Orleans, you know, and when I was 20 years old and Mardi Gras, I probably thought that was great, you know? But I've, I wasn't real smart then, okay? And so hopefully I've got a little bit more wiser in saying, well, maybe then, you know, Milwaukee is not the Vucaray. So at any rate, there is a lot of devil in the details, you know, and we actually talked about a couple of events that are really open container events already. We talked about the Bing Drop and the Winter Solstice, you know, and those are sort of well-defined events, you know? That's not like, you know, the whole downtown is kind of open city, and so there's a lot of devil in the details. And, and I think it's, it may be hard to get, you know, sort of comparisons that, you know, perfect comparisons, because I'm not sure they're there. So, I will tell you that, um, I'm skeptical of a freewheeling approach, okay? Because I want this to be a family-friendly downtown, and even if...
So, I'm sorry, I kind of want to save deliberation for later. This was supposed to be questions? Sorry.
I'll shut up.
I'm sorry, but, okay. Thanks. I want to get the public input, and then you can go down that road.
We'll see.
Okay. Counselor Kosterbadi.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, chief, for, for bringing this information and these concerns. My question is, you know, and I know there's, there, you know, we haven't done a study on this, or, and I know Counselor Anderson provided a study a few months ago, although a different policy, although similar in some ways, but I'm curious as to if this will, in your professional experience, could this lead to an increase in drunk driving incidents as well?
If, if we start to have more of an attraction, more people coming to the downtown, there is more drinking, I, I think the assumption would be that we would have more impaired driving. What are the, I, I agree wholly or completely that the devil is in the details on these kind of policy decisions. So, providing additional information, and then I'm also very, a little defensive over staff time, because we, we have a lot that we're managing right now, and there's a lot coming. New things to Milwaukee that will increase our call load quite a bit. We have new apartment complexes, we have hillside redevelopment, we have the 23-hour stabilization center. All those things are going to increase our call load. So, partnering with our business groups and community members to create the best thing we can absolutely makes sense. Into Counselor Massey's, I, I've been to Las Vegas Strip and some other areas, when you walk that, there's a police car every block, there's uniform officers every block, and there's a heavy presence. That's not going to be, and, and I realize that I'm not trying to overblow this, and some data points, too, to Counselor Anderson. One might be, well, how many times have you issued citations for drinking in public? Our officers typically don't, because we try, also, most of the people we're working with are houses folks, and issuing them a citation is not something that, i- it's almost a waste of time. So what we're trying to do is to navigate our way through that. So, the citation data point won't be there, but that would be a data point that we should have, you know, that's pertinent to what this conversation is. So, this is just, I think, like I said, the start of broader discussions, figuring out what those details are and fine-tuning. Make a ton of sense.
Other questions, Counselor Kosterbadi?
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Counselor Stavanger?
Thank you, chief. I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering, and maybe this is, you know, what you've gleaned from your conversation with Hood River, or maybe there's some of your ideas about how this would be implemented, but would this be focused on the entire downtown, specific areas, specific zones? What?
So, I'm under the impression that there would be a certain designated area within Milwaukee or outside certain designated businesses that, that we're looking at for this open container.
Okay. And this would be certain containers, or would, would it be any open container?
So, like, again, with finalizing the details, but I think it would be products sold from the stores in Milwaukee, or that they would have some sort of container that they would agree upon, that's, represents, you know, something that identifies them that they can drink in our open containment zone.
Okay. So, I mean, I imagine that if we were to proceed with implementation of this, that there would be a lot of conversation with local businesses around what they think would be best practices for this as well?
Yeah, I would anticipate many more as, as you start to finalize details.
Is that something that Hood River has done?
Uh, I think the business district, I'm trying to recall the history of it from our conversation. I don't recall exactly how it created at the front end. I was more, I was in a pretty narrow lane for what was the public safety impacts.
Sure. And then I guess this might be more of a question for our city manager, but I'm kind of wondering, you know, what sort of additional signage or trash cans, or like what other infrastructure things would we have to be thinking about as we, as we move down this path?
Great questions that I don't have answers to, I think, until we kind of know the scope and scale of what we're talking about here. But, back to the devil, the details, I think great things we'd have to look at. I also, I, Mayor, I think you had a conversation with the mayor of Hood River, and my understanding from your notes from that was, theirs was almost actually a happy accident. They didn't have a prohibition on open containers on the books. They didn't actually take any proactive steps to repeal or create a law allowing.
Okay.
That's right.
And then I guess, you know, my last question, it makes me, like, when you start thinking about the, the data points and/or lack thereof, you know, is this something that we could consider on a temporary basis and kind of work through some of the kinks and get an idea of, you know, kind of baseline information that we could be looking at? And, I mean, is that something that you have considered in your proposal, or in the, in bringing this discussion?
I think as the discussions would progress, we would try and look for those opportunities to, to say, how do we track information, make determinations, and then evaluations after a certain amount of time has gone by.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. That was all for now.
Okay. Thank you. I guess my big question is, do we know what, I mean, what OLCC will allow us to do, or is it all in our discretion? So if, I mean, like, I know there are people here who want to talk about First Friday. So First Friday, we would be probably looking at a zone that extends from this building to South Downtown Plaza, right? And over to 21st, and, you know, the streets in between. So it's, we're talking about a pretty big, it's not just like the solstice where it's a finite place and you can have a few, few beer alcohol monitors, or like what they do when they use the farmer's market lot, right? So, do we know what's required of us by OLCC, or what we would have to require of people in those permits?
I, I think we would have to really define where it is we're going and what that looks like, and then pose that question to OLCC, and have them weigh in at that point.
Okay.
Just to add on to that, yes, OLCC has a process right now for approving kind of special event permit, things like beer gardens, or, you know, those kinds of things. We would need to do more research with them on if it was more of a, like, these blocks, you know? Couple other parameters that we've been thinking about, again, that we just need more research. If we do go down more of tying this to an event permit route, which I think is a really intriguing prospect, it does raise some interesting insurance questions. We currently, you know, require our event programmers to have insurance, and I, we need to understand if that would have to change. I know like NCPRD, for example, when they permit events in their spaces that requires alcohol, they have different insurance thresholds. And then the second, in terms of a public safety piece, is if it's an event that closes ri, that closes streets to driving traffic or not, and then what that does to the insurance liability, because there's, there's ride, there's, there's different types of ride away. There's ride away to sidewalk, and there's ride away where there are motor vehicles traveling. So, I hate to be a broken record of like the devil in the details, but we're really excited about this conversation, because it's going to help us really kind of understand where we would need to go next if, if we go take this further.
And I'll say to the city manager's point, there are issues throughout Clackamas County where there is an event where the person goes into a bar, they drink, something happens outside the bar, whether it was driving, an accident, or an injury that's sustained outside the establishment. The civil litigation follows, it gets really messy, it's complicated, insurance, all those touchpoints come into it. So, it seems straightforward, but there's a, many layers that follow.
Yeah. The insurance piece is definitely a piece to think about. Okay. If no other questions for the chief?
I have one question that I, it's not, it's kind of, it's for the chief, and it's for maybe people who are going to testify. It was in the staff report where we really appreciated the public comment that sparked this conversation, but it would be really helpful for us to hear, too, kind of what the, I want to say like what the problem we're trying to solve is, but sort of what the opportunity space is here. What, what's bringing folks out with this interest? Because I think that, that was, when we wrote the, the report and put the analysis together, was a little bit of a question still for us, and that will help us respond, I think, more fully to some of these questions if we can really understand what's, what we need to change about the current state to achieve what we're trying to achieve here, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. I assume everyone heard that. So with that, chief, we'll let you step back, and we'll invite them up. We've got four signed up. If you haven't signed, if you think you want to talk now and you didn't sign up, you still have a few minutes to do that. And I'll start with Mike Lesch, since this was his email that set all this off. And we're going to give you three minutes. This thing will count your three minutes if the yellow light goes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light, and then it beeps at you. Yes, there you go.
Thanks for having, allowing us this opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I am Mike Lesch. I am co-owner of Beer Store Milwaukee. And the, the reason we brought this idea out, we actually presented it a number of years ago after we first opened, and I made my first trip to Hood River and learned that I could walk down the waterfront with a beer. That was amazing, and we thought it would be amazing here as well. At the time, I don't think we had the buy-in, we definitely didn't have the buy-in, or the backing. And I think the reason that we really want to do this, or that we brought it up, is, well, with First Friday, it, it's had its struggles. The pandemic also played a key role in slowing that down, and that was really hard on the small businesses in, in downtown Milwaukee. Our idea is that if we can allow for packaged products, this is packaged from the manufacturer, this isn't somebody walking around with a, an Irish whiskey or something like that. These are beers, malt beverages, wine, celsars, something that you could buy at the grocery store, not at the liquor store. And also, it has nothing to do with the environments of Louisiana, or Mardi Gras, or Las Vegas, because, you know, if you go to Las Vegas, they're serving you outside of a walk-up window, a pina colada. This is, is nothing like that. What we're hoping to do, right now, if I buy an adult beverage at a location in downtown Milwaukee during First Friday, I have to stay at that location till I finish that beverage. The idea was that what happens is that's where the people congregate then, and they're not exploring the rest of the city. And that's what we were hoping for, that it would give people the opportunity to buy a packaged beverage or bring one with them. I mean, they could go to Safeway or something like that, and they can come down and then walk around and visit all the locations, and spread out, and not stay at the place that they bought their adult beverage, their alcoholic beverage. That was the whole goal. That's what led us to writing the letter and bringing it to the table again. We don't anticipate this to be, you know, beads around the neck and, and that kind of a situation. And it, we anticipated it would be event-centric, so when there is an event, First Friday, Winter Solstice perhaps, there are also summer concerts. There was the concert we just had this summer, the Tom Petty cover band. There were not even fences around that. Wouldn't it be great if the city could have sold, I think the city, somebody was selling alcohol there, if they could have sold it in packaged... if they could have sold it in packaged containers? All of those aluminum cans could have gone into the blue bags that we get for the bottle drop now around here? And we can donate them. We're not having plastic going to the garbage, things like that. My time ran up. Probably a million. But what was nice to hear, especially with the chief speaking, that it is the beginning of a conversation. And that is very promising, and we really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mike. Next, Karen Baronic, who's with the Downtown Association of Milwaukee, the new dam. We're trying to get rid of one dam, but we like the other dam.
Do it? Okay. Hi. Hi, guys. I'm Karen Baronic. I own Milwaukee's Planet Sports on 21st and Lake. So I'm just going to read what I wrote so I don't get my thoughts lost. But thanks for having us here and thanks for shifting this to the public session so we could be here. So I want to speak in support of this policy and hope for this change. I think that it could breathe new life into our local businesses and turn our downtown into an even more vibrant and inviting place. Downtown businesses are the heart of our community. They provide unique experiences, offer local products, and create jobs. But like many other downtown areas, we face challenges in attracting foot traffic. One possible way to increase visits and sales is by allowing open containers during public events. Imagine people strolling through downtown, enjoying a drink as they visit shops and restaurants. It's an experience that encourages people to explore, linger, and support businesses along the way. As the owner of a business on 21st and Lake, I rarely get foot traffic during events. But if people were allowed to bring a bottle of wine to Milwaukee Bay Park on a lovely summer evening, or wander freely during First Friday, they just might walk right by my office and notice my window when they simply would not have before. They might also notice that their back is sore, and maybe they need to make an appointment. It's a simple but effective way to boost both the economy and the social atmosphere. Open container policies have been successfully implemented in cities across the country, and the results do speak for themselves. Higher foot traffic, increased sales, and a stronger sense of community. An article on explore.com titled, "It's Legal to Drink Alcohol in the Streets in These U.S. Cities", written in January of this year, featured 11 U.S. cities. And one of them actually was Hood River. And they mentioned it along the likes of Savannah and Memphis and New Orleans, which, you know, and we talked about New Orleans. And I don't think there's a problem, or really a risk of Milwaukee becoming a New Orleans. But I actually thought it was pretty cool that Hood River, you know, a small town in Oregon, was featured along with cities like that. And it highlighted outdoor views and the ability to drink in parks there. And I don't see why downtown Milwaukee can't be another featured location like that. Responsible drinking and safety really would be a top priority. And I do think with the start of this conversation, clear rules and oversight, we can ensure that the benefits of this policy are maximized without compromising safety or enjoyment. So in short, open container policies during events can transform our downtown into a lively destination that attracts both locals and visitors, benefiting our businesses and building a stronger sense of community. Let's embrace this opportunity and make our downtown a place people want to come back to. Ta-da. Oh, hey, wow. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. I'm here to advocate for relaxing the open container regulations in downtown Milwaukee, even if they are initially limited to specific events. I think this change could play a pivotal role in the city's ongoing revitalization. Addressing some of the points made in the staff report, I think that the aim isn't to promote, obviously, excessive drinking, but it's to cultivate a lively environment where people can socialize and move freely between establishments and event hubs. This flexibility encourages folks to explore various venues, boosting foot traffic and benefiting multiple businesses. I think a practical first step is to establish an entertainment corridor during the citywide events, similar to San Francisco's recent creation of entertainment zones to invigorating its downtown. I think I saw in the packet, you had mentioned that. Allowing open containers in designated areas can transform our downtown into a dynamic hub. The staff report asked what problem this would solve. And I think the biggest impact would be that patrons would no longer be confined or tethered to single establishments or beer gardens during events. Instead, they would explore multiple venues, increase foot traffic and revenue for various businesses. This approach appears to have been successful in other cities. I think implementing an entertainment zone would be well-suited for Milwaukee specifically. Downtown is a public transit center. We have the MAX, and many of our neighbors live within walking distance of downtown. I imagine the seamless flow from the existing food carts on the south end of town, along Main Street, to Cha Cha Cha, to the upcoming Freem Brewery, and to the, hopefully soon, new and improved Milwaukee Bay Park, and the new food carts in the beer store here on the north end. This setup would enhance the experience for residents and visitors and attract more events and businesses to our downtown area. So in conclusion, I think a strategic approach to open container laws could really invigorate our downtown, support local businesses, and enhance the community experience. I urge the council to consider this as a strategic move toward economic and cultural development. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Your mic. Your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. And we have one last yellow card from Shalina Havens.
All right. Thank you, guys, for having this event for the open container discussion. My name is Shalina Havens. I have had the privilege of trying to organize First Fridays since COVID. And definitely, this open container policy has been a conundrum of like, what are we responsible for? What are we not responsible for? Street closures, you know? It's, having more cohesive plans and structure would be really helpful when trying to solicit more vendors to come to these events. Because it's, we are right on the cusp of Portland, which means that there's a lot of uncertainty about what our rules are. Is it separate from Portland? Is it the same as Portland? So those kind of things are like really what I see for First Friday events. And also, what was it, 2020? I can't remember the dates. Anyways, the previous, not this last year that we just finished, but the year before, so that would have been 2023. Having, trying the idea of getting people to walk from the beer store all the way down to the food carts and back and forth, and not having a destination besides Cha 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 in the middle as a place that people can meander. There was a lot of not meandering. And this last season, having the focus of the community space in front, where the farmer's market is, was a lot more cohesive. And there was a lot more people appreciated that. But then the people on the ends, not so much. And so, like, trying to get this flow, we have this amazing river, you know? We are all about water. We should be flowing fluidly through this, through this city, and we're not. And so I'm really excited for this discussion, and I look forward to continuing the conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have no more yellow cards. Mr. Stauffer, is anybody online wanting to speak? Okay. All right. Chief, you're welcome to come back up if there's anything you want to respond to. Or if not, you. Okay. Okay. So discussion, folks.
Mayor, oop, there it is. I did have one more question for the chief. You don't have to come all the way back up.
Yes.
Oh, darn it. Sorry, chief.
Have to catch it on the microphone.
I wish I had thought about this in advance. But if, so, if someone were to be partaking in an open beverage experience and biking, would that not be a moving violation?
You can get a DUI on a bicycle.
Okay.
So that is possible.
Okay. That was, that was my big question. Because I know we do have, you know, like, I'm just kind of trying to think about what the implementation of this might look like and the things that we would want to be really clear about. And it seems like messaging, messaging that if you are in any type of vehicle moving forward, that there might be some risk there.
And there's a whole new world of e-bikes.
Exactly.
And everything like that, too. There's just a tremendous amount of touchpoints on this that would need to be pinned down.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Can I clarify, Chief Brittick? If you're going around at Porch Fest and you are sitting on the street drinking a beer, are you breaking the law?
So, the hypotheticals, we try and avoid the citation if we can. So we are working very hard to get compliance versus issuing the citation. So we have had countless conversations to say, can you please pour that out? And that typically is the best outcome.
Okay.
So that's what we aim for.
During Porch Fest with our existing code, you'd be telling people to pour out their drinks? In theory?
Potentially, yes.
If they're in the street versus in somebody's yard, does that matter?
It does.
Okay.
It does.
Yeah.
Can't sit on the sidewalk, though? Can't sit in the roundabout?
We would prefer people not to be out on the sidewalks, especially the street, with alcoholic beverages.
Couldn't walk house to house at all?
Well, we're going to try and work towards some compliance. And there are community events. We're trying to support the community. We're not trying to be, you know, and those are the things, we want to be doing other things versus enforcement in community events. I mean, and I'm really trying to stay away from that or have our staff stay away from that. Because we have so much other work to do in other areas. And I mean, significant, I mean, we are, we're running at about 110% of capacity right now.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for the chief before we let him go? All right. Get back to discussion. Counselor, Council President, I cut you off. So I'm going to give you first dibs at starting the discussion, if you would like.
Well, I'm not sure if I can form it in the form of a question, but.
Oh, it doesn't have to be a question now.
Oh, wait. Oh, I'm sorry. We're not on Jeopardy. Okay. All right. So, one, I was pleased to hear the discussion more focused on events. Because in some of the written documentation, that didn't jump off the page at me. I went back and read them again. And I read more event-focused, maybe through those eyes, through those lens than I did before. So I am pleased to hear this be more of an event. But I will tell you that I think that no matter what we do, I'm a proponent of baby steps to see how this works out before we have this huge expansion. Because we really don't know exactly how this is going to work out. I think you kind of, if you go down this route, you, you, you know, you do the best you can to, you know, to lay out the parameters and that kind of thing. But it'll never be exactly like that. You learn from that event and that kind of thing. So I'm a proponent of small steps initially. And really, event-focused rather than, you know, every day of the year.
Other comments?
I do appreciate you all bringing this idea forward. Like, I see really thinking about our open container policy as a good way to support our downtown community. I kind of see three ways that we could take this after the conversation that I'd be curious to put forward. One is, I could see specific, like, changing our event permitting process, something that we've discussed a lot here, to make it more lenient or more straightforward, or just providing those guidelines. So it's very easy to do that. I think that what that doesn't solve for is if someone wants to take a bottle of wine down to Milwaukee Bay Park and have a picnic, there's no special event for that. So I think the question is, do we want to change that necessarily? I think if we do want to get at that, creating some type of entertainment district where you say, we suspend this in this area in downtown, is a possibility. The third option that I see, kind of implicit in the chief's last answer, was, right now, we charge, I think it was a $200 citation. And if we changed it so we remove the monetary citation, and it's something that you could be told to pour out your drink, but you're not necessarily worried about financial penalty. It's a little more, I worry about overpolicing this. And I think that, like, I, I want to, I don't see infringements of walking around with a beer in your hand as some inherently evil act. And so I think that toning down kind of the penalties for this might be something that gets at that. I think a lot of the concerns that we have about this idea about drinking as we walk around, frankly, are just concerns about drinking. And if we're concerned about the impact of drinking on our culture, let's make it illegal to open up a alcoholic store downtown. I don't think that's a productive policy. And so that's where I kind of like, don't see why we need to then overly police the idea of people walking around with alcohol as well.
Well, I don't think anyone wants to, you know, go back to prohibition. But I have been seeing a lot of articles lately about how public health authorities are ratcheting downward the, what they consider a normal and healthy amount of drinking. And it's lower than, I mean, it's, it's pretty low. You know, and there's a lot of, anyway. I mean, I do think there's a public health aspect to promoting alcohol on a everyday kind of a basis versus an event kind of a basis. Counselor Kosterbadi, you've got your hand up?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. You know, just to touch on some of the stuff that you mentioned, I look at things from the public safety aspect and the public health impacts as well. Obviously, we have a substance use crisis. And I don't know if increasing the opportunity to drink and consume alcohol is really in the best interest of the public. I get what it can do for businesses, and I understand that side of it as well. But with an already stretched thin police force, I mean, and to Counselor Anderson's point of just make it illegal, I mean, we already have bars and establishments for people to drink at. And some of the stuff I point to also is some of these public service announcements that have been going on, rethink the drink. And some of the message there is like, when did we have to have a drink for everything we do? Now we got to have a drink when we walk down the street, too? I mean, is this, is reducing barriers to access to alcohol and those things really the best thing? Like, does that outweigh, and again, we don't, we don't have enough to go either way, I think. But does it outweigh the benefits? You know, does the potential issues outweigh the benefits? So, you know, there's a lot that has to go into this, a lot of thought that has to go into this. And not saying that the conversation ends here. Obviously, it's a continued conversation. But if it is something that goes forward, there's a lot that we need to think about because this affects people on a social level both ways, negatively and positively. So that's, that's a concern I have. You know, we only have one Glenn, by the way.
We only have one, oh, one Glenn. Right. Right. Counselor?
So I think this conversation is fascinating. And I really appreciate everyone who's shown up tonight to participate, share opinions, whether that be through testimony or through contacting us outside of the meetings. I think that there is a case to be made for the economic development and the revitalization of downtown and increasing foot traffic and activity. I think that there's also certainly a case to be made for the culture that is promoted by having more normalcy around alcohol in our community. So I think, you know, where I kind of sit with it is, So I think, you know, where I kind of sit with it is I think that we should explore this conversation. And I think we should hear from the different sectors that should contribute to a solution. And certainly, we've heard from the business community tonight. I would love to hear from some public health partners. I would love to hear from Recovery Partner. I would love to hear, you know, like, I feel like if we're moving towards some type of practice in either downtown or an entertainment district or something like that, I'd like it to be put together and grounded in best practice. And that can be economic best practice, and it can also be in a public health best practice. I don't think that those are mutually exclusive. I think that we can come up with a good solution by getting folks around the table to have that discussion. So I guess where we're at with it now is that I think that this is worthy of exploring. And I think that we should move through the discussion of exploring that. And then maybe it's that staff bring back a summary of those conversations or maybe we have a larger discussion with, with those other partners. I know that there's been some discussion in our social media groups around Milwaukee, but I don't know that all of council is reading those threads. And I don't know, you know, that everybody's had an opportunity really to kind of weigh in on this. But I think it's definitely worth something to explore. I think that, just lastly, as a business owner, I think it would be interesting to also look at, and maybe this is something that, that our business partners can bring into the conversation, but to look at the legal ramifications around liability. You know, like, let's say that someone, let's say we do have an entertainment district and there are businesses that, that don't want beverage container, open beverage containers in their stores, like, what does that kind of look like? And I'm wondering, you know, what, what that conversation has been like within the Downtown Association or with partners within the business community? So I guess, you know, I have questions, but, but they're not prohibitive questions. I think that we should explore this.
And do you think we should explore it as an event focused thing or as a general thing? Or you're open to both?
I think we should explore it as a temporary thing to determine the best fit for downtown. And if that means that we do it as, you know, a few events and kind of like dip our toes into this world and see how it goes with a few core partners, like, you know, I think that the beer store puts a lot of thought into how they determine the space that's outside. I mean, I know I've been down there a number of times and, and have been told like, hey, you got to scoot, just scoot just a little bit further here because, you know, you can't be outside of this space. And that's, that's monitoring that is on you, too, right? Like, you're putting extra capacity and time into that. So, yeah, I guess, I guess, yes. I think we should explore it. I think we should look at what this looks like scaled out. And whether it's events or a district, I think that's left to the conversation with our community.
Okay. I'm trying to get some, trying to help get staff to some reasonable amount of next step to chew off. And, and I guess to. You were not helpful in that. I mean, I would say I've heard from everyone but Counsel Anderson more of a focus on an event based, an event based trial and not going full bore entertainment district trial. Is that safe to say?
Could I ask how people would feel? I think events is good. Changing the penalty for this, how?
Well, I think that's something staff heard you. They can bring that back.
Okay, I mean, how other people feel.
I don't, I didn't need to see the penalty schedule. I don't know what it is, so, yeah, I'm not ready to discuss that tonight. But, um, um. Okay, I, I mean, I will say I'm with, I'm somewhere in between these two, literally and figuratively. I, yeah, I'm more interested in exploring an incremental approach, exploring events as a starting point. I do see a ton of line drawing issues and especially a literal line drawing issue because if you had asked me to draw like the downtown zone, I probably wouldn't have extended it to Milwaukee Spine and Sport, to be honest. I would have stopped at South Downtown on the food carts. So how we define what the area is, what amount of security or policing or, you know, monitors are required, the insurance requirements, I would, I mean, yeah. I mean, the insurance could be a killer of the whole thing. And so I would like to see us find a way to do it without having a big insurance requirement. Because I can tell you, I've been on the, on the board of the Milwaukee Parks Foundation. We don't serve any alcohol, but we run a duck race and we have to buy insurance for that every year. And it just seems crazy to me that we have to, it's our volunteers. It's not the public that's going down there in the creek with the ducks. But we still have to buy insurance for that event every year. And, you know, anyway, so, I mean, I, I, I think there's a lot of things to try and pin down. I do want to call this out. The city does have a map, as I recall, of a downtown zone where you're not allowed to ride skateboards. And on the sidewalk, I mean, you're not, you have to use your skateboard in the street. You're not allowed to ride them on the sidewalk. And that might be the, that might be the map to start with, to think of as a downtown, because it's sort of because of downtown pedestrian orientation.
What if you're riding a skateboard, chief? I'm joking, I'm joking, don't go.
Well, yeah, I'm sure his answer is the same.
The motto writes itself, sip, not skate.
There you go. Anyway, does, do you feel like you have?
I do. I, I really want to just express a ton of gratitude for everyone who came tonight, Mike, for starting the conversation and the folks who showed up. It's also so exciting to see our business community organizing like this. So that's awesome. I also just want to point out, because I was talking to Joe about this earlier, I was, I was wrestling with the like, well, what, what's, what are we trying to solve here? Question, and you guys answered that beautifully. And I want to call out like the altruism of owners of drinking establishments being like, we don't want people to congregate here. We want them to walk down the street and shop. And I just like, we have good people owning businesses in Milwaukee. Yes, I think I've got clarity. We can take this back. What I'm hearing is we need to come, we need to do some more research on some of the questions raised today, liability, public health, the penalty rate, the geographic area. We'll continue to kind of talk to other municipalities and see what we can learn. And I think we'll return with some, some scalable options that are informed by those, the findings there. And I think you're right, Mayor. I think insurance is probably going to be limitation factor number one that we're going to have to wrestle with. But I think we have enough to chew on and come back sometime in the new year with, with what some next steps could look like. And I just want to respond just to, to Counsel Anderson's question about the penalty. We'll look into that, but I want to just clarify, I don't believe today we're, we're over enforcing. And in fact, I think what I heard the chief say is we, we have like an active best practice of really not enforcing it, instead really working with folks to avoid any kind of enforcement action. And so the, the framing of this, just again, is a potential public safety consideration. I wouldn't even call it a concern at this point, but a consideration is, since that is our practice, and that is a practice that actually requires, I think, more, more capacity and resources in some ways than just writing citations. That's why just not knowing entirely when you open a can of worms, how many worms are going to jump out is what we're wrestling with. But I just wanted to, on the record, say, I don't, I don't think we're over enforcing our open container policy. I think, in fact, we aren't enforcing it.
Thank you, Counsel Anderson?
And if it's okay to clarify here, I guess that is part of the reason why I have a little bit of discomfort about having a penalty on the books if we're not enforcing it. I think about the way that we often apply penalties differently depending on the group you're a part of and, like, I think that that, to me, is troubling if someone, a white person on the sidewalk during Porch Fest is okay to drink, but like different communities are not given that same grace. And I think that's where I think if we're not enforcing it on some, we may as well get rid of the financial penalty for all. And if we are still going to like, still have the law on the books, but make sure that that like grace that we extend to some communities is extended to all people in the city, is I guess why I'm interested in thinking about that.
Well, I guess I will just say I have confidence in our police force. They've had a lot of equity training in the last several years, and I have confidence that they will not be discriminatorily applying that. But I do think there are probably places where we need that penalty. So I'm not keen on the idea of absolutely eliminating a penalty. Anyway, all of that can go into the next discussion. I did have someone who came in belatedly and wanted to testify, so I want to give him his three minutes. Rod Smith has, I guess he must have been watching this on TV and he, he. All right, you have three minutes, so.
Being an actual Cajun from Louisiana and has spent many nights avoiding the crowds of drunken people who throw bottles and have fights in the middle of the streets, I would suggest that you look a lot into it. Now, I'm glad I wasn't the wet blanket, had to come up here and explain to everyone that the insurance would be insane, okay? Also, the problem is, once you open that can, you have other people who step up and go, what about pot? It's okay, right? We can walk it up and down. You guys allow equal opportunity for the alcohol. Why not marijuana? Now, I'm not, my wife, okay, loves using the weed to take care of medical issues she had in the military, but I don't think she would feel comfortable walking down the street. But that doesn't say everyone wouldn't try. Our problem also comes from the fact that we have a certain amount of a budget involved that talks about our police force being on site during, during these events. Now, how much is that going to increase our police presence when we have people now being inundated with alcohol? Now, I'm not saying everyone doesn't have an angel on one shoulder and the devil on the other. And once the devil becomes a little tipsy, he does what he wants. But I do point out, the police are here for that kind of reason. They'll keep order if they can. But how much are we going to be paying for these extra incentives for the police to show up and do this? And will that incentive show in the economy? Will all businesses actually get more money from having our police force on the streets, protecting their businesses from vandalism, from throwing bottles, from just the events that could happen when someone walks down the street who's not part of the event and gets punched by an individual who's a little more than buzzed? Now, that liability alone is an issue. What if someone slips on a pole, takes out his, you know, breaks his face open because he drank too much and now he fell down? Now, is the city liable for that individual having the, the right to walk up and down the street because the city said it's okay to have an open container and walking down and back and forth? Where does the liability end? And where does it begin? Who takes responsibility? Does this lovely city of Milwaukee take the responsibility for an individual slipping and breaking his knee, especially if you've given him the opportunity to drink? I think you opened up a lot of doors that you probably didn't want to in the beginning. And my biggest fear is that once you start opening these doors, you have to give equal opportunity to anyone who comes up here. It becomes a Pandora's box of sorts. And being a Louisiana Cajun, I can tell you that Pandora's box is kind of hard to shut. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think staff knows where they're headed and we'll have another discussion in February or March, probably. Well, I shouldn't say early, early in 2025. Thank you, guys, for coming. And you're welcome to stay around, of course, but we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is adoption of our tree code. Does anybody, no, we'll go ahead. So I invite our Climate and Natural Resources Manager, Katie Guevaras, and our Urban Forester, Courtney Wilson, to come forward. My computer decided it was going to reboot right in the middle of the meeting. Did it? It's annoying. I remember it happened to somebody else, you know, several months ago, but it never happened to me.
And Mayor, before Katie and Courtney start, I'll wait for. I, I did just want to note that we received some.
We're having a meeting here.
I just wanted to note before we start this item that we received some comments on this, this code package after the packet went out. And Justin was out of the office on Monday, so with him being back today, we quickly talked. There are a few things that we, that staff would, in those comments, the staff would like to sort of noodle on and be better prepared to respond to. So our recommendation would be for tonight that we open the hearing, hear the staff report, and then continue the hearing so that we can do a better job being prepared to respond to those comments. And because not everyone has seen the comments, did I capture that correctly? Justin and staff, does that, as a recommendation? Okay.
Okay, we can do that.
Point of process, this is not noted as a hearing. It's just a discussion item adopted.
Oh, I, I did say it was a hearing earlier, yeah.
Just to be clear, just a discussion.
Okay. Well, it's an ordinary, yeah. So I don't have a big, long script, so you guys can just dive in.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Courtney. I'm the Urban Forester at the city. This is Katie, Climate and Natural Resources Manager. And we're just here to talk about the proposed tree code amendments tonight and have some further discussion about changes or any questions you might have. Just to give a brief overview of the proposed code changes that we brought up last month, our goals are to improve the overall organization and readability of the code, also align the impact of the code with its original intention, reduce loopholes in enforcement, and further align with our natural resources code. So for example, to improve the overall look and organization of the code, we added articles, removed any redundancies, provided space for potential growth within the code, and also moved the tree board section to Title II. To improve clarity of code language, we added and revised definitions. We also renamed Type 1 and Type 2 permits to Type A and Type B permits. We also clarified what trees can be used towards private development canopy credits. And we consolidated enforcement codes, and violations are now clearly stated within the code.
So we, we were at council last month in November, and in our work session, we didn't have any notes. And so the code we presented to council in the packet was the same that you all saw. And so if we want to talk through some of the great comments that, Mayor, you sent, but we didn't include that in the staff packet. And so, yeah, that, we wanted to re-summarize kind of where, why we started this code amendment to do some kind of very functional edits and are hoping to, yeah, move those forward.
So I'll just clarify for folks, at the time of that meeting, I hadn't read it. And I had intended, I'd said even at that meeting, I believe, that I was going to read it that weekend, that I was going to get my comments. And I was, I did not do it until, until later. So my comments are mostly small things. I don't think any of them are super significant, but I guess there were a few that I could see you would want. but I guess there were a few that I could see you would want to think about more or discuss more.
And I think when, when there were some things about definitions brought up and we just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence to see if, you know, if we're considering a proposal to change any definitions or looking at cross-references in the code. And we just aren't prepared to answer, to, to talk about that tonight. Um, we'll need to do, spend a little bit more time having those internal discussions.
So I mean, I don't think there was anything in my comments that are policy changes that I need to daylight for the rest of council. I mean, I guess you can share them. Uh, if you, you know, when you circulate again or whatever, if you want to, but um.
Yeah, I think the idea is that staff, our team that's put this together, will get, put our heads together, look at the comments that we received, figure out how we want to incorporate them or if we don't, get answers back to you and then distribute with a new staff report if there's any changes from where we're at when the packet went live on Friday.
Okay. Uh, well, my apologies for not getting to it sooner. Um, I uh, did we get no comments from anyone in the public? Through this whole thing? Very interesting, because I get complaints. I get oral complaints quite regularly about our tree policies. So it's interesting to me that we get no um, comments on the code, but. Uh. Yeah, maybe I should. Um, any, I mean, I don't guess there's really anything for you guys to ask questions about, but I want to offer you the opportunity to ask questions.
So, your comment, your questions are not incorporated in, in the strike throughs here?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
I guess, how are we getting those comments or will you include them in?
We'll have another packet. We'll have a future packet.
Yeah, we, we have to analyze what the comments are, what the definition changes are or additions or we, we frankly haven't had a chance to talk about them. So we will do that. Some of them you might see in the packet or we might end up with the exact same package you have right now. But we need to kind of dive in and take that, take that process.
Okay. Well, then, so I don't need a motion. We will continue this item until, and we don't have to have a date certain because we're not in a public hearing. So we'll just continue this item to whatever point you guys reschedule it on our forecaster.
Well, thank you all. Thank you for the short, lousy visits. It's good to see you.
Thank you. All right. Sparrowsite. I'm kind of surprised we don't have any public here for this. Okay. I'll turn it over to our assistant city manager.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Beatty, city councillors. Joseph Rilio, Assistant City Manager. Um, I'm gonna let Scott help me here for a second. This uh, will be helpful just to have it in front of us, I think. Um, but I guess I can start. So um, on September 17th, staff had a conversation with council about updating the Sparrowsite goals and whether those needed to change. Obviously, the council has changed. And so we wanted to circle back with you all and see if there was any changes and there seemed like there was. Um, in most cases, and I'm just gonna skip, this is the exact same overview we saw back in September. Um, so I'm not gonna go through it again unless you want me to. But I was just gonna go to the goals and essentially wrap um, or wrap up what I thought we heard last meeting and what has occurred since last meeting. So at our work session meeting in September, the consensus from council to staff was essentially that all of these goals are seem pretty great and pretty good still, except for affordability over rent versus rental, whether that was gonna be um, something that we wanted to change, as well as the, the level of area median income. And so after that meeting, staff at the direction of council held a study session just last week with Jesse Ledesma, who's uh, the founder, owner of Homework Development, uh, to give us some, a little bit of a crash course in homeownership models for affordable housing. And hopefully that was insightful. I thought it was. Um, and so now, coming back again, hopefully we have a little bit of due diligence behind us on this, on this issue. So I guess the question for tonight, uh, for you all is, first of all, do you agree that we got pretty much all those goals are pretty much the same except the affordability and the ownership versus rental side of things? Yeah, okay. Great. Um, and so I guess to you, the, the question before council tonight is, um, I think we're leaning towards ownership if I'm reading the tea leaves, but uh, as far as, I don't know. That's, that's up to you, but affordability levels as well, uh, going up from depending on whether you're gonna choose ownership versus rental, I think that is a big part of. I think ownership, I think what we learned is that you want to go a little higher. I would recommend as a staff person saying um, 80% to 100% being the high, the upper limit for ownership.
Ah, so the staff report says 60 to 80?
Hmm, probably from the last time we spoke.
Oh.
That was the original goals.
Okay.
Um, this is, this is, I'm carrying this through from our discussion with Jesse.
Can I clarify then? You're saying that if we want to do a homeownership model, we would have to do 80 to 100% AMI?
You could do whatever you wanted. Um, what I'm suggesting is, yeah, exactly. From what I'm suggesting is that if, from what we learned on last week was that homeownership models are a little bit more intensive. And so Jesse was suggesting 80 to 100% is what they're doing with Shortstack. 80% is, I think, where they, they finally landed. But her other options were a little bit above that. So. Thoughts?
Thoughts? Councilor Costrabody has his hand up.
Take him in chunks too. Affordability or ownership versus rental, I think is maybe the first question.
Yep. Um, well, I, a couple of things for me, if we're gonna do ownership, I don't think 30% and below is gonna. I mean.
Right.
That's gonna be too hard. Uh, you're not gonna be able to do that. We can't do 60 and we can't do 30 and below. Um, uh, I, I would rather see 60 to 80 with a cap to 100. If we can't get somebody in at 60, then we can uh, try to work towards 80. Uh, but I would like to see 60 be, because I feel like 80 is already 100 in Milwaukee, right? Isn't it?
Yes, yes. 80% of AMI is 100% of Milwaukee. Medium and.
So I, I would, I feel better at 60 to 80 because then that would mean that the 60 to 80 is actually 80 to 100. If you guys follow the math there. So um, yeah, I, I, I just think it, you know, that would be a more effective goal.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson.
And I guess to clarify, Councilor Costrabody, right now it says preference for lowest AMI possible. So it's still good. We're trying to get lower than 80 to 100, but we're okay, like, the highest, the, the, the absolute cap is between 80 to 100%. Is that in line with what you're saying? Or you're saying that's out of line? We should, if it's over 80%, don't accept the project.
No, I, I think um, it is the, the former of what you said. I think we should aim for 60 to 80. But if it can't, like, if it came down to not doing the project or going to 100, then I'd, I'd, I'd rather go to 100 because at least it's something, right? But I, I, I have a pretty good feeling that we can at least get it to 80, right? Again, if you're looking at it being, you know, 80 is actually 100, then 60 is actually 80. Um, but a cap of 100, yeah.
So, Joseph, can you just clarify sort of process-wise? How this plays out? Like, would we do an RFP saying 80% cap? And then see if nobody responds and then we know we have to go to 100% cap? I mean, how would, how would we do that?
Excellent question, Mayor. Um, that's, that's essentially, we are, this is a, we're building the plane and we're gonna see if it flies. And if it doesn't, then, you know, I'll have to come back to you and, and adjust accordingly based on the feedback we get from those that did not want to, that, those that have been interested but ended up not participating due to, you know, one element or another. So that would be exactly what we'd do.
Okay. Council President?
Um, first of all, uh, ownership is my preference. When we get into the affordability, you know, level, I do have a preference for the 60 to 80%. But as we learned, um, that can take a lot longer to get. And so there has to be some patience, I think, and if, if we go that route. And I don't know if you put a, um, some time brackets on that or not because, you know, people can get impatient and that kind of thing. And they say, well, if we don't get 60 to 80 in three months, then let's go to 80 or 100. And I just, I would say like, three months is like, it's nothing. Because I think it's a long, it just takes longer for, you know, the uh, the uh, the folks who develop these things to, to bring these in with the various grants and loans and that kind of thing and financial backing. And so I, I think if we go into this with the, with the, you know, a 60 to 80, you know, target, you just have to realize that this pushes the project out, I think. Is that accurate?
I think it certainly has the potential because, yeah, you're gonna start layering finances and some of those.
Yeah.
Those tools come from many different entities and those entities have different timelines.
Yep, yeah.
And so if we issue an RFP and say, you know, up to 80%, um, how long do we need to, because of the complication of the financing? I mean, either how long do we need to leave it open for somebody, for the bidding, for the bidding of the RFP? Or do we sort of know that somebody who bids may not be able to pull their financing and we may be back at square one?
Yeah, I think it's, it's more of the latter there. Um, we go through typically what has occurred, you issue the solicitation, the RFP, go through evaluation and those that submitted aren't gonna say, you know, we guarantee we can, we have all the funding in place to do this. They might say, we feel pretty good and we have to get other components to line up. And that goes through the negotiation process once we go and we pick a developer and go through. And then that still doesn't guarantee that they end up being able to have the finances to make the project happen. This is, it's, and that's no different for affordable housing or market rate. Like, there is, there is these fluctuations, so.
Counselor?
Are we tying the hands of a future council by setting this at, at a certain um, cap or, or, I mean, I guess, uh, how am I trying to say this? I'm wondering, given the timeline for putting out an RFP and the timeline that this council kind of has, you know, um, if there might be a possibility that this would um, prolong the vacancy of, of the Sparrowsite? Does that, that not make sense? I guess I'm just kind of wondering how long it might take, um, if we lower the cap and the financing becomes more difficult.
I think this project will take a long time.
Either way.
Either way. Uh, it's, it has some constraints. There's some money issues, there's some access issues that need to get figured out. That'll be part of the discussions and negotiation with the developer. Um.
Brownfield.
Brownfield, yeah, remediation. There are things that are gonna take a while, so. Uh, I know this has been in the queue for a long time, but I, I would expect this is kind of, we haven't ever even attempted to launch and to start the next phase, which is actually developing it. We've.
But if I understood your timeline here, like, we could be issuing an RFP, RFQ this spring. So in terms of the, where Councilor Savage started about, you know, constraining future councils, I guess we'll know by the end of this year whether our first run at an RFP had takers or not, and whether we're having to raise the.
Thank you. I appreciate the assist, Mayor. Um, that is, that isn't the direction that I was kind of going. Like, if we make it through this first round and we identify that we don't have takers or that it's, are we hearing from our development partners that it is prohibitive? Um, then that would still give this council the ability to go back and revisit this goals discussion and frame a, a future RFP.
100%.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I think, I don't know. It sounds like everybody's on board for ownership and trying, starting with an 80% RF, 80% AMI goal.
Great.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, I would also, just on the ownership side, and we talked a lot about community land trusts. Um, Jesse also mentioned there's other types of models out there. Uh, you know, land equity model she mentioned. I don't know that we, we could say we have, there's a preference for CLT, but um, if someone has other models that would provide affordability for many, many, many years to come that aren't community land trusts, but provide ownership and wealth generation, I would say, why not? But up to you all.
Yeah, I don't feel like I have the expertise on that to, I mean.
The goal is ownership, I guess.
Yeah, the goal is ownership and, and some perpetuity, some, you know, yeah, some restriction to save the second buyer, you know, to make it affordable.
Joseph's language in the staff report, which I think is really great, is a, with a preference in scoring for proposals that use a land trust model to keep the sale price down and to maintain long-term affordability beyond the first sale, which I think is broad enough to.
Could we make just a very slight amendment to that, which would be preference for a land trust model or equal? You know, or, or equivalent? That, that would allow the development partners to really kind of like bring best practice in to their application.
I love that language.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Councilor Costrabody?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So the, will it read, the affordability level, will it read like that for, for preference for lowest AMI possible with the highest acceptable level being 80? Or is it just gonna be 80? Could we do the range from 60 to 80? Because if somebody can't make it work?
Y- yeah, I mean, that's what I'm hearing is is the preference is for lower, but still 80% is the highest we'll get. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna still be worded similar to what it's on screen now, right?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Cool.
No other comments on that question, rental versus ownership and affordability level? I know you had some other questions, I believe.
Well, no, that's, that's it for the goals stuff. I just, I, here's, here it is again, just to make sure that other ones are still.
Well, and I want to just clarify, Joseph, what you're showing on the screen, I think, is actually what was before their September discussion. You guys made a few changes in September that were solidified. I thought they were solidified. One was like, we changed unit mix from that specific two to three. This is all in the staff report too. And it says preference for a, in project including family-sized units, so a bit vaguer there. We tweaked some language around affirmative outreach. Development team will create an affirmative outreach plan to provide information and attract eligible persons to live in the development from all racial, ethnic and gender groups in the housing market area. Um, so I just, I, I think those were the two other ones, but I just wanted, we, we didn't lose those pieces of feedback. Those were just pieces that I think we solidified in September. The AMI, we weren't solidified on, which is why it's the one question Joseph was pulling.
Well, and the ownership, we weren't solidified on, yeah, yeah.
Great. Good. Oh, sorry, not good.
Um, just to clarify, the developments we're talking about here would be allowed by right, mostly. Like, we're, we're not doing something that would be a non-conformant use in the zone.
No, I, I mean, that would be the developer's discretion, but I don't know why they would choose to do something that would be.
I say that just to clarify some of the concerns that I had heard at a Lake Road any meeting. So it seems like we're not proposing anything.
You mean an island station?
And I live in Lake Road too, which is the most damning part about it. Um, but um, the, I guess, other question that I would have or the one flag that I really hear, heard clearly from that meeting is to be communicating with county partners about the transportation needs along 26th and streets that are outside of Milwaukee's jurisdictions. Um, I see us doing a lot of the work inside the city, but as we go down this road, to be thinking about how we communicate with the county. I think that will help some of the mayors there.
Well.
Either Lake Road or Island Station.
Getting the county to fix residential streets, I mean, have you been on Bowman Street or Bray? Whatever the one is right next to the park, it's terrible. You go through some of the worst streets in the county to get to that part.
It is fair though, yeah. Thanks, Counselor.
Uh, any other comments on that? Do we have anybody online wanting to, any public comment? No, okay. Um, okay.
Okay, with that then, um, this is just kind of our, our goal would be for the next steps. Uh, just to remind you, back in 20, well, I guess we're still in 24. The year that never ends for some. We, we did submit a HUD Pro application with the county, uh, with the housing authority and for $1 million to help fund Sparrowsite um, infrastructure. Uh, we will hear about that application likely in February, so we think that it would make sense to probably release an app, uh, an RFP after that, so that we know if there's some dollars that we could use to leverage or incentivize. Um, but then. um but the next steps would be city council hearing we need to do a surplus hearing bring it back to you and probably the early next couple of months quite frankly we have some noticing issues or just noticing statutes that we have to follow but that would be the next step and then get an RFP authorization releasing the RFP likely late late winter early spring and forty five days at least if not longer probably sixty days would be my guess at this point and then we'll see what we get and then we'll definitely let you all know if we need to make adjustments on what we hear and
okay it's exciting
that's been talked about a lot um I've been here for over three years it was a thing that was gonna happen real quick when I got here we're actually gonna try so it's neat it's neat to at least
I was gonna say it was purchase of this property was one of Mark Gambas first things he did as mayor so that's how long and he was mayor for eight years so that's how long it's been going on um yeah
well thank you all I really appreciate this
I thought you had a do we want to spend CET money question in your staff report
yes yes sorry thank you mayor um I'm a little bit disorganized uh we did talk about that at the work session and it wasn't fully clear to me whether that was something we wanted to use because there was other
I wasn't clear whether you're saying we would do that now we would wait till after the RFP to see what they people think they need
yes so that's that's kind of where I'm I'm personally landed right now is to see what we get and then we can we can even add something vague in the RFP saying you know there might be some funds available so without us having to figure out what makes sense or not
everybody's okay with that yes I'm getting nods okay and a thumbs up from councillor poster body so uh all right all right wow that went fast
holidays
yeah yeah well all right and we've already done council reports and unless anybody has any last ones they didn't give okay I think uh yeah happy holidays everybody's last meeting of twenty twenty four we start in a couple weeks with swearing in of a couple of our councillors and and go from there and talking about goals so um and hopefully our city manager will be well she won't be walking by then but she'll be yeah there you go all right um so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn
I'd move to adjourn second the motion
it's been moved and seconded to adjourn all those in favor say aye
aye
aye opposed none heard we are adjourned